For the police and fire pension boards, um, the amount that they'll be showing us tonight is for two thousand and twenty five. Um, the state's actuary is provided by Foster and Foster, and they will provide the statutory minimum. That's the required amount that the city has to contribute in two thousand and twenty five. So those amounts generally differ and staff will be presenting those in a memo um, in the council packet next time. So you'll have both of those numbers available to you along with staff's recommendation. So with that, I will introduce Kevin Kavanaugh from Lauterbach and Amen, and he will kick off the presentation tonight.
Thank you very much for the introduction. Uh, just, just a quick test. Can everybody hear me all right on your end?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. I hear you loud and clear as well. So I, I'll be happy to answer any questions kind of as I get towards the end of my presentation. Uh, but I'll run through the, the results of this year's actuarial evaluation results uh, with the council here. So starting on page two in the presentation, you should see that uh, screen shared in front of you as well. Uh, you'll see really the key result for this year is that the recommended contribution for the fire pension fund, um, as stated to be contributed during calendar two thousand and twenty five, um, is five million, four hundred, five thousand, five hundred, twelve dollars. On the police pension fund side, it's coming in at six million, two hundred and seventy one thousand, four hundred and sixty six dollars. Um, and just to refresh your memory on this, uh, last year was our first year um, as the actuary for Rock Island. Uh, when we took over as the actuary uh, from the prior actuary, there was a rather significant increase in the recommended contribution amount. Uh, that was between, uh, you know, two years ago and last year. And so what the agreed upon approach was, uh, was to implement what's referred to as a transition plan. And so effectively, instead of taking that big leap um, in the recommended contribution to go from where you were at to where we would be, you know, the perfect recommended amount for this year, for this last year and this year, uh, we're phasing in that change over a five-year period. So later on in the presentation, we'll get into what the transition contributions were broken down into fire and police. Um, but in total, you'll see it footnoted at the bottom there. The total con- uh, transition plan contribution uh, for the current contribution year would be ten million, five hundred and twenty seven thousand, four hundred and forty two dollars. So that's kind of like a halfway in between what would be um, uh, where you were at and then what would be the full recommended amount for this year. Moving along, you'll see a couple other numbers on this page. Most notable is the unfunded liability. Um, so for fire, you get about fifty eight million dollars of unfunded liability for police, about sixty nine million dollars. So the way you can kind of interpret that is that's how much money it would take to get these pension funds to be a hundred percent funded um, in today's dollars. Um, ultimately, that shows you your funded percents for this year. Um, on the fire side, the fund sitting about fif- thirty-three percent funded, uh, and on the police pension fund side, about thirty-nine point six two percent funded. And then these total columns, you can just see the sum for both funds if you're interested in that. Moving to that next slide, this is going to detail out all the different changes. So this is reconciling from last year's recommended amount to this year's recommended amount. Um, and you're going to see a bunch of different items listed here. Um, all ultimately, all of these are impacts on the recommended contribution and how we see that change over the year. So we expected to see an increase of about three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars this year. Um, we did see salary increases a little bit greater than expected on the fire side. Um, that does include an assumed uh, two point two five percent cola increase. That's we expect to be retroactively applied once the new collective bargaining agreement is settled. Um, and then you can see uh, below that actuarial experience uh, is going to be the demographic changes for each fund during the year. The plan changes uh, is a one-off change this year on the police side. I'll, I'll get into the details in that in a minute. Asset returns uh, greater than expected on the fire side, less than expected on the police side uh, for a net fifteen hundred dollar increase. And then contributions uh, less than the full recommended amount, uh, which is kind of what we would have expected to see for this year. Um, and so we see about a fifty-one thousand dollar increase for fire, ninety-four thousand for police. Um, so ultimately, this kind of just explains why there was that two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar increase uh, in the recommended amount for fire and three hundred and seventy thousand for police. Next slide just details out the two components that make up the full recommended contribution amount uh, for both fire and police. Really what do, what I wanted to highlight on this page is just, just to show you the really the employer normal cost, you can think of that as the ongoing cost of benefit accrual for active members in the pension fund. So you're really setting those dollars aside today uh, to cover the accrual of benefits so that eventually when those benefits get paid out, uh, you know, you'll have expected earnings on all that money um, to be able to pay those future benefits. Um, that represents a pretty small portion, honestly, of the cost uh, for your funds. That's it's, it's about, it's about eleven to thirteen percent of the recommended amount um, is the normal cost. The vast majority of the payment uh, that makes up the recommended contribution is really paying off that unfunded liability. Um, like we saw a couple of slides ago, the funds are between thirty-three to forty percent funded. Um, so really, there's, there's a, a long way to go to reach that one hundred percent funded mark. And so this year, really, the majority of the payment is paying off some of that unfunded liability uh, with the goal of being a hundred percent funded over the next seventeen years. Uh, that's the current funding policy in police. The next slide is going to detail out all the demographic changes in the fire side. Um, usually I don't like to dwell too much on the, in the weeds on, on this type of stuff uh, for a city council meeting. Um, so I'll just kind of quickly skim over this, but on fire, you can see there was a couple of new hires, few retirements, some terminations. Uh, a few members passed away, so you can see the impacts there. On the police side, a, a lot more new hires, we saw thirteen new hires into the fund this year. Uh, one disability, four terminations, uh, one service purchase, and a couple of retirees and a disabled member passed away unfortunately. This next slide is, is kind of an interesting one. It shows you, uh, these are all the active members within the fire pension fund. Uh, and it's showing you down, down the vertical axis here is the age of each member between uh, five-year age bands. And we also show, show the service across the top, split into five-year age bands. And then you can see the headcount of tier one as well as tier two uh, pension eligible active members. Um, and then towards the bottom right here, we box off this section uh, because that's going to represent anyone who has attained retirement eligibility. So basically that means, you know, at their discretion, anybody within this box can, can retire um, and start collecting benefits. And so it's a pretty significant portion. This data is as of December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, so you might have seen a couple of retirements since then. Um, but as of December thirty-one, there was actually twelve of your fifty-seven active uh, firefighters were retirement eligible. That represents about twenty-one percent of the firefighters currently working eligible to retire. So that's pretty significant. I mean, you probably see a pretty big spike uh, in retirements and this is next couple of years, if not this year. For the police, uh, you see the same thing here. Uh, quite a few less members are retirement eligible. On the police side, we just see nine, oh, sorry, seven of the seventy-nine total active members, which represents about nine percent of the police officers that are eligible to retire as of December thirty-one. Some more demographic info is on page nine, so you can see your headcounts of active and inactive members for fire and police. Most notably on this page, I would just uh, highlight the fact that there's a significant amount more inactive members than there are active, which makes me kind of categorize your pension fund in my head as, as a, a mature fund. Uh, basically, you're, you're a well-established fund that's been around for a long time. So you actually have more members drawing benefits from the pension fund than you do contributing into that fund. Um, and that's partially why you're seeing um, a lot of the payment this year, for example, is, is paying off unfunded liability because it's kind of the, from the past and it's associated with your current retiree population. Page ten is just going to detail out a plan change for this year. This is totally outside of anyone's control, really. Uh, that's a part of this conversation today. It was a change made at the state level uh, to improve benefits for police officers. Uh, so formerly, if a police officer was retired and then they got married, so while they were already collecting a pension benefit, um, then their surviving spouse would not be eligible to collect upon the death of the officer. Uh, affected this past year that, that did change. Um, so now, under a couple of different criteria, uh, there can potentially be a situation where a, a police officer retiree who gets married while collecting a benefit can now potentially have an eligible surviving spouse. So we did factor that in. That generated about a fifteen thousand dollar increase to this year's recommended contribution on the police side. This uh, page eleven is definitely an important one. This is, this is highlighting the transition plan that I referred to earlier. Um, so we talked about, uh, there was a big change in coming over as the actuary in year one last year. Um, so we decided to phase that in uh, over a five-year period. So now this is a, important numbers to see on this page because these are, um, you know, it's like we talk about our recommended contribution. We put, kind of put a little asterisk next to that and say, well, technically, under the transition plan contribution, you know, these are the transition contributions. Um, so you can see the full amount for fire, for example, is five point four million. The transition amount this year, uh, four million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, so quite a bit less. Um, and as you can see, it kind of, it helps to kind of slowly ease you into, uh, hopefully in the long run, the city can uh, get up to that full recommended contribution amount. Page twelve is just going to show you the change in asset value during the year. Um, during this particular year, uh, calendar two thousand and twenty-three, definitely a very good investment year. Uh, the fund's expected rate of return on investment is seven percent. And you can see here uh, for fire, the fund returned more than double that, fourteen point five three. Uh, and for police, the fund got about thirteen point two seven percent return. So um, definitely a great year um, on the investment side. And you can see combined investment returns uh, just during this single year, uh, was almost nine million dollars. You can see it's, it's almost equivalent to the amount that the city contributed to the fund, just in investment earnings alone. Page thirteen is some risk management comments, so I'll spend a minute on this page. Uh, these are some comments we look at for every fund and we try to identify uh, what are the risks that are kind of unique to your fund uh, and, and where do you fall and on those metrics. Uh, so this first one, uh, you see it for both fire and police that we compare the fair value of assets, just the total assets within the pension fund against the inactive liability. There's a pretty significant shortfall there. Uh, again, this comes back to the fact that your fund is a very mature pension fund. Most of your liability is um, associated with inactive members who have already separated service. Um, but this is about a thirty-four million dollar shortfall um, on the fire side. It's about a forty-eight million dollar shortfall on the police side. Um, so what that means is that on a going forward basis, we want to continue to monitor that and hopefully this gap shrinks. Um, and it also, it, I'll, I'll explain it in the context of this next bullet point as well. Uh, the ratio of benefit payments to the fair value of assets. So this, what this metric is telling us is if we look at the total pension fund each year, what percent of those assets are used just to pay benefits to the pensioners? Um, so for your fire pension fund, it is, is a very high, um, pretty concerningly high, I would say, ratio of eighteen point three four percent. Um, so that means, you know, that's eighteen percent of the total pension funds accumulated asset value, you know, over the many years that it's been in existence. Almost eighteen, eighteen, almost, you know, a little bit more than eighteen percent of that fund is being used in a given year just to pay benefit payments. Ideally, where we want to see that number um, is we want to see it closer to the expected rate of return. Ideally, that, that would kind of create a situation where if the funds was paying out less than it was expected to earn, uh, then you'd be in a growth position just from investment earnings alone. You'd have a member contributions, employer contributions, just helping to build up the future asset base. Um, but with this much going out in benefit payments, you know, it, it's really tough um, for the city to kind of get ahead of that because, you know, not only is that, that's, that's a lot of the pension fund assets being used to pay benefits, it requires the pension fund to hold a lot of money in cash on a regular basis just to be able to keep up with benefit payments. That restricts the ability of the fund to earn uh, on investment earnings over time. So eighteen point three four for fire and fourteen point three five is what we're seeing for police. Um, the other items here, uh, just kind of noted, uh, low demographic risk for both funds. They're big pension funds. Um, and if we look at this bottom exhibit, this is just detailing out how important this one assumption is in the actuarial process, which is the expected rate of return on investments. Uh, currently, we use seven percent for both fire and police. You can see how if we were to use, you know, six, seven, five, or seven and a quarter, how that would change the contribution, you know, for fire. Um, by, you know, a hundred seventy, a hundred eighty thousand dollars and police, you'd be talking over a quarter of a million dollar uh, swing just for that uh, slight change in assumption. Um, but right now, being at seven, I think it's a reasonable spot to be. Um, the, got, what I alluded to earlier, the consolidated fire and police pension boards will issue their own statutory minimum actuarial evaluation report. Um, and when they do that, uh, they'll base uh, for the fire side, they will use an expected rate of return on investments of seven point one two five percent. And on police, they'll use a six point eight percent investment return assumption. Page fourteen, this, so this is kind of a proxy for ultimately what you will see come through uh, from the consolidated fire and police pension boards. Uh, this is, we call it the alternative contribution, so it's following that state statute for minimum funding policy parameters. That's to be ninety percent funded uh, by the year two thousand and forty on a projected unit credit basis. Um, so you can see for fire, that's going to come in this year, four million, seven forty-five thousand versus our recommendation, again, is the five point four million. It's about a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar difference. And for reference to the transition contribution, that was that four point nine eight. That's about a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar difference uh, as it compares to the transition. Same, same numbers on police. Um, alternative contribution this year is five million, two ninety-four, seven seventy-six. That versus the recommendation, it's almost a full million dollars less than our recommendation at the six point two seven. And then on the transition basis, uh, where it's about a quarter, that's a quarter of a million dollars less than the transition contribution this year, which is the five million, five fifty-two thousand. Um, then you can see just funded percent is calculated on this basis as well on this page. Uh, but other than that, that's really the key results I wanted to go through uh, with, with the, the council this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into further detail if anybody uh, wants to talk anymore.
Anybody have any questions? Nope. Sounds like you did it well.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll stick around for a little bit, just FYI to the council. I gotta jump off at seven. So just in case, if you see me drop off, that's just because I gotta head, head out around then. But um, otherwise, I'll just, I'll kind of stick around and listen in for a minute.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will then move on to the next topic. Being presentation of the regarding downtown TIF. Who's doing that?
Jared, are you able to hear us and share your slides?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, you sound good. Well, why don't you just roll right into it? This is Jared from Moran Economic Development.
All right, so tonight, um, we are talking about what is the first step in the potential establishment of a new TIF district um, for the downtown area. The schedule that we have provided outlines um, sort of the timeline of events um, for the statutory requirements when you are looking to establish a TIF district. Um, so the goal for tonight would be to discuss a little bit about how the TIF qualifies. Um, and what that is called is the feasibility study. Uh, the requirement for the TIF Act is that the feasibility report be prepared to provide with reasonable detail how um, the TIF area may qualify. What that does is it allows your taxing districts to know that you were looking at potentially establishing the TIF district. Um, and they will be included on every step of the way, a lot of communication, a lot of notices, a lot of mailings um, to all those folks. But this is really the first part of it. And um, as I said, coming out of tonight, we will ask that the feasibility study be placed on file. So that way, um, we can then pass the ordinance that would establish the public hearing date and then on and on we go on the schedule from there. So tonight, a little bit about the area that we're looking at um, for the study. Um, as I mentioned, the feasibility report um, is to provide some reasonable detail as to if the area would qualify for inclusion in the TIF district. Um, and if so, if TIF would be an appropriate mechanism for the redevelopment of that area. So the area we're looking at is generally the same type of layout as what was the former downtown TIF district um, with some minor changes, um, as you can see on the map there. Um, this area includes four hundred and five parcels of property. Um, actually, it's four hundred and forty-six unique parcel identification numbers. Uh, but generally, we're talking about four hundred and five pieces of land within that boundary area. Um, and on to the qualification factors, when you're looking at a TIF district, um, the developed properties and the undeveloped properties qualify under different sets of criteria. Um, and then there's actually a subset for the developed properties, um, which is called a conservation area, uh, meaning that if you have at least fifty percent of your structures that are aged thirty-five years or more, um, then you're only required to meet three eligibility factors as it's um, per the act. Not yet necessarily a blighted area, but because of the presence of aging structures um, in some of those eligibility factors, it could ultimately become a blighted area. Um, so, and then on to the undeveloped portion, um, it's required that those undeveloped properties meet at least two criteria as they're defined in the TIF Act. And so moving on to what we found um, as part of our uh, analysis of the area. Um, we have eighty-eight percent of these structures within that boundary being at least thirty-five years of age, with the median year of construction being nineteen twenty-five. So with that being said, we can qualify the area as a conservation area. Um, some of the conditions noted within these properties, deterioration. A lot of this was what you would think of as general wear and tear over time, uh, with the area with as many age structures as this. Uh, these are very common conditions. On the hundred and eighty-nine of the three hundred and ten structures, um, and a hundred and seventy-eight of the two hundred and seventy-three parcels exhibited some form of structural or site deteriorated conditions. Um, we also noted that excessive vacancies were an issue. Um, a lot of what we referenced in the lead up to our study was um, looking at some of the other plans that had been done for the city. Um, mainly the city's comprehensive plan and the downtown revitalization plan. Um, and those, one of the key issues noted in both of those for the downtown area was vacancies. Um, the perception of these vacant structures on the economic vitality of this area. Um, and that seemed to be the primary concern, um, or at least one of the top five, I believe it was, in both plans for this area. Um, and those vacancies can have an effect on both the affirmation aforementioned deterioration. Um, you know, you have vacant structures, the upkeep can start to lag a little bit and those deteriorate conditions can get a little bit worse. Also things like property values, which we're going to get to, um, vacant structures have an effect on all the adjacent properties. It can really uh, bring down the economic viability of an area if you have some of those vacant buildings, um, both in terms of vacant structures in their entirety or just partial vacancies, uh, things like second floors or um, certain suites within a larger structure being vacant. Another factor we noted in the developed parcels were deleterious land use or layout. Um, this, we leaned on the comp plan a little bit in referencing how um, established buffers would ideally be done between um, commercial and residential properties. So you have obviously a commercial area with your downtown. Um, but you also have some residential um, uses that are intermixed and also some residential uses just on the outskirts of the boundary. Uh, and ultimately, it's just to say that if the property were to be redeveloped in the future, you'd want to be very conscious of these land use relationships so that you're not creating uh, further conflict. And also that the existing um, growth of the area wouldn't be limited by um, some of these um, adjacent land uses and uh, what could be some noxious effects on those um, mainly residential properties next to the commercial areas. And that kind of ties into the next factor, that's the lack of community planning. Um, there's conditions in the area that are indicative of this, one of them being the deleterious land use or layout. Um, another factor here is uh, things like parcel layouts, the subdivision of land. Um, ultimately, if the area had been designed and fully developed with the use of a comprehensive plan, um, it may have been laid out a little bit more efficiently. Um, it may have been a little bit more conducive to development. Uh, but as it stands, since the area is so aged, there wasn't a overall planning document that guided that development, which again is very common when you have any area as old as the one that we are looking at. And finally, um, we noted the stagnant or declining property values factor. This is defined by the act as that if you have three or more of the last five years where your redevelopment project area is growing at a rate that's less than the balance of the municipality, where you take the so- total city EAV minus the EAV of the parcels in the project area um, for three of the last year, three of the last five years, uh, as I said, increasing out rate less than the balance or the CPI. So CPI is the consumer price index, which is a measure of inflation, uh, more of a uh, national measure for economic growth. Um, and so we found that actually the project area had lower growth rates in the balance of the city and the CPI for four of the last five years. So the developed properties would, or the areas as a whole would meet both the uh, thresholds for that property value factor. So moving on to the undeveloped portion, as I said, um, you need to meet two factors here to qualify. Uh, we found that there are a hundred and thirty-two parcels of land found to be vacant. Some of the conditions, um, we noted there were something called diversity of ownership. We found that over half the properties have different unique owners. Um, what this means is that um, you could have issues when you're trying to encourage redevelopment or development of those vacant properties. And that if you don't have coordination between those property owners, it could be difficult to do things like land assembly um, to get sites that are development ready. Another factor we noted, uh, similar to the deterioration in the developed portion of the area. Um, there's also a factor uh, regarding deterioration of adjacent properties to those undeveloped properties. And so again, we noted a, a significant amount of deterioration and str- site and surface improvements, and this is also um, present throughout those vacant parcels as well. Um, sixty-four percent of the undeveloped properties have deteriorated surface improvements, either serving the parcel itself, things like sidewalks, adjacent roadways, or um, those vacant properties were adjacent to develop properties that exhibit um, deteriorated uh, structural conditions. And then lastly, the property value factor, um, that applies to the area as a whole. Um, and so the undeveloped portion would qualify under that factor as well. And then the tables there, as you can see, that's the total project area in compared, comparison to the balance of the city um, as well as the CPI. So you can see, when you look at those annual growth rates, that the uh, project area have lower rates than both the balance and CPI for four of the last five years. So with that, we concluded that the area would likely qualify uh, for what is called a combination of a conservation area and a blighted area. Um, and ultimately, the use of TIF would be an appropriate tool um, to facilitate the economic development and the redevelopment of this area, um, using those TIF revenues that would be generated um, within this boundary for those eligible costs that would then in turn increase things like uh, property values. Um, hopefully, with your commercial area, increase your sales tax collections and overall encourage um, self-day redevelopment of this area. So with that, um, like I said, this would be the first official step, um, when considering this new TIF. Um, some of the next things on the horizon, um, coming up in October, you would pass an ordinance that would establish the public hearing date and time. A little bit down the road, um, in between all these steps, there's going to be some administrative work, um, which we'll work closely with um, city staff on all of that and we'll uh, prepare things like the notices, the mailings, the lists of who they go to. Uh, we really try to make this as easy as possible on uh, city staff. But in between, um, all of those required notices and mailings, the big events, um, after that adoption of the public hearing ordinance, we will have the joint review board meeting. That's where all the taxing districts would be welcome to come and we would discuss the eligibility criteria of the area, uh, the planning documents, and then also there's a requirement that we, we review the um, draft ordinances for the potential adoption. Uh, following that, we would have the public hearing that would be scheduled for December second at six P M. Um, again, we will be present there to um, go over a little bit about the plan, about what you're looking to do and to answer any questions and listen to comments from the public. Then finally, um, if you choose to proceed all the way through, once you get to December sixteenth, you would have the ordinances that would um, establish this new TIF district. There'd be three ordinances, uh, one approves the redevelopment plan, one establishes the redevelopment project area, and the third would adopt tax increment financing for that area. Um, so tonight, I would be happy to answer any questions, both about um, the feasibility study itself or general TIF questions. Um, if anybody has any of those.
I have a question for Miles, not for Jared. But I'll, does anyone else have a question for Jared?
No.
Thank you very much, Jared. Appreciate the information. Miles, do we have any plans for specific programming or projects that we anticipate to deploy some of this TIF funding? Obviously, we're going to start small because we're just starting now and we don't know exactly how much money is going to be available for a balance. But do we have specific programs or projects in mind to fund with this?
So there are a number of things that have changed in the several years since the original downtown TIF closed. One of the big things that has changed is there are a lot of sites that have now been cleared of derelict buildings that were not cleared at the time the other TIF was open. So whether it's the bare manufacturing site or the class uh, properties, um, we have places where we have a real opportunity, if there's a developer who comes uh, knocking with interest, to use TIF to help fund their project. Um, I don't want to discuss any super specific uh, projects that we may be uh, working on, but those are sites that are known. but those are sites that are known to all of you, since we paid to clear them in recent years. So if you look at any sort of proposal for development on a site that is basically starting at a value of zero or close to it, and then you have a whole new building put on top of it, that's your ideal increment rebate arrangement, right? So there's a lot of opportunities like that. To the question of programming, many communities, and this has been true of us in the past, as well as in the present with the North Eleventh Street TIF, use TIF funds to support various property enhancement programs, facade programs and the like, that allows property owners to use the TIF to make meaningful code related often improvements to their properties. Those are sort of right out of the box programs that we could launch day one, more or less. So there's a whole range of different things along those lines that we would be able to utilize this new TIF district for.
I take it back. Perhaps a question for Jared, I don't know, maybe Jared, maybe Miles. Are we going to retain the LOX TIF? Is it getting folded up into the new TIF? What are we doing with the LOX TIF?
Jared and I actually have a meeting tomorrow to discuss that very question. It is, if you looked back at the proposal for this, one of the things that staff wanted to evaluate. The only obligation in the LOX TIF was the LOX apartment building itself. The final payment is this year or was this year. So it's kind of now a TIF that sits there with a balance that could be used within the small boundaries of that TIF. Or we could close it and reincorporate it into the new larger TIF. There are pros and cons to both, but we're going to be evaluating that and obviously bringing that back to all of you as part of the kind of overall package.
Do you anticipate having the Downtown Alliance weigh in on programming? It sounds like we're looking at a PIP and GRET program funded by TIF, potentially. Are we, do you anticipate utilizing the Downtown Alliance to get feedback as to what type of programming would be beneficial?
I think that staff would welcome input from any interested parties on this. Obviously, there's a lot of different parties involved when you're talking about the downtown, be it the Alliance or just other unaffiliated property owners and business folks. So we're really all ears for any sort of feedback. With the old downtown TIF, we still have a lot of folks who benefited from that, who I'm sure would be very excited to see this tool come back online, who would love to see some similar sorts of programs to the ones we had before. If there's anybody who's thinking about something new and novel and different, we'd also be happy to consider that when the time comes to.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none. I guess that's it. Jared, you appreciate it. Job well done. Miles?
Jared, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, if that's all there is, then I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Will be second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned to six forty five.